To welcome you and call to order the April 23th Port Orchard City Council regular meeting, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are to the approval of our agenda, are there any modifications to this evening's agenda? Hearing none, Mayor, Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented, the discussion of this evening's agenda, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. We are to our first citizen comment period, which is for any item that is on the agenda. We've got a second period at the end of the meeting, does anybody wish to address the council for anything that's on the agenda? Please step forward and identify yourself.
Hi, Kathleen Wilson, I'm the manager at the Port Orchard Library and also president of the Port Orchard Bay Street Association, and I just wanted to comment on the community center that the resolution is being adopted later on in the agenda, just to say that the community center has the full support of the Bay Street Association and the Kitsap Regional Library, we're very excited about the possibility of this potential building coming to downtown Port Orchard, I think it can be transformational for the community, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Sue Ann Martin Smith and I own the Homemade Cafe, I am following exactly what Kathleen's saying, as owner of a business on this end of town, I'm really thrilled to have something viable down here towards the other merchants over here, I think it'd only be fabulous, we get so many people, as I stated earlier, being a destination restaurant, coming looking for activities, we're right on the water and they want exciting things to do, I think it would behoove us not to move forward on this, thank you.
Your comment. Others wishing to address the council for anything that's on this evening's agenda? Hearing no other comments, I will close the first citizen comment period. We are to our consent agenda, Councilmember Claussen?
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ashby, any objections to the consent agenda this evening? Hearing that none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We are, we don't have any presentations or public hearings and we're charging right into our business items, the first of which is adoption of a resolution confirming our participation as a public partner with the Port of Bremerton and Kitsap County to support the proposed community center event, I guess this says it's me, let me get the electronic device opened back up here. So, with that, a discussion was held during the April 9th 2019 council meeting regarding the proposed community event center and a resolution that confirms the city's participation as a public partner with the Port of Bremerton and Kitsap County, it is anticipated that the Port of Bremerton will be adopting a similar resolution at this evening's meeting and Kitsap County is working through a process and I've had conversation with them and they should be bringing forward a resolution in the next few weeks. As it relates to our comprehensive plan, development of a South Kitsap Community Center would support and implement several goals and policies of the Port Orchard Comprehensive Plan, encourage the ongoing development of downtown Port Orchard as an active and vibrant community, commercial, social, and civic center while respecting its historical character. In conjunction with the proposed center's strategy, enhance downtown Port Orchard's role as the center of Kitsap, South Kitsap, of the South Kitsap Region, reflecting the following principles of development standards, encouraging land use that supports transit centers and promote pedestrian activity, promote mixed-use development including retail, office, and housing, encourage uses that will provide both daytime and evening activities, support civic, cultural, and entertainment activities, provide sufficient open space and recreational opportunities, enhance and provide access to the waterfront, develop, enhance design guidelines and design review requirements that promote attractive pedestrian scale development and redevelopment in the Port Orchard's historic downtown area, ensure land use designations development supporting the existing maritime industries, promote creative uses of the waterfront, and facilitate the planning and construction of waterfront parks and gathering spaces, encourage residential uses above the commercial and retail ground floor developments including, and incentives for public amenities, facilitate the planning and construction of waterfront parks and gathering places, the city shall prioritize economic development and redevelopment in local centers, as appropriate work with other jurisdictions and agencies such as state and federal tribal port and other cities and the Kitsap Development Alliance, the Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce, and the Kitsap Public Utilities Districts in marketing and developing the city of Port Orchard. Staff recommends the adoption of a resolution confirming the city's participation as a public partner with the Port of Bremerton and Kitsap County to support the proposed South Kitsap Community Event Center. You'll notice the resolution also details if this three-phase development was fully built out, those numbers total to about $1.2 million in property taxes that we don't currently have, of which $193,000 of them are to the city of Port Orchard. So, Mr. Claussen?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt a resolution confirming the city's participation as a public partner with the Port of Bremerton and Kitsap County to support the proposed South Kitsap Community Event Center.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion or comments?
I definitely have some, so I'll start with one and we can pass it around, but speaking to the whereas that talks about the taxes, I still think it's misleading and it's not true if we refer to this entire bucket up above as saying is a net increase, so I'm just wondering if we can't maybe just re-describe it as this, these particular parcels would now be paying this amount of tax, but I think it's misleading, for example, South Kitsap Schools portion, it would not be a net increase of $246,000 to them, so I just want to make sure that what we're saying is factual, and so maybe if we just rephrase that sentence that it would be new monies being paid by those parcels, but it wouldn't necessarily be a net increase to the school district, and I think this is implying such.
I think you're correct, and what Councilmember Cuthbert is referring to is the school district when it passes a levy, it asks for-
It's a fixed dollar.
A fixed dollar amount, and so what this development would do is spread the, it would pick up this portion of the school's levy amount and reduce property taxes actually to other parcels within the city, so how would you like that?
Well, I think up above in the whereas, instead of just saying resulted in a net increase in annual post-development property tax as follows, I would change that sentence and just talk, maybe be more specific to that the increased valuation of these properties would result in these numbers of property taxes being paid to these jurisdictions and not lead people to believe that it's a new funds for these agencies.
I think we're at the point here this evening that we're going to need to wordsmith this here for the diocese, because I think that's going to need to be an amendment, because we've got a motion to pass this.
So just get rid of the words net increase, just resulting in annual post-development property tax revenues, because you're speaking to the increase, the assessed valuation of these parcels from 395 to 120.
Just remove the word net increase then.
Yep, resulting in annual post-development property tax revenue to various agencies as follows.
Okay, so I have a motion to remove the word net increase, two words, net increase from that whereas, is there a second?
Resulting in annual post-development, just get rid of a and in also.
Yeah, in a, annual post, yeah.
Or in annual post-development property tax.
Yeah.
Resulting in annual post-development.
Knock those three words out, net increase in.
It's actually four words out.
Resulting in a, annual, so you would take net increase and in out.
Resulting in annual post-development property tax revenue.
So, a, net, and increase.
In a net increase would be gone, in a net increase would be gone.
Four words.
Yeah.
Yep, four words.
Is that what the second heard?
Say that again.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion and a second to remove those four words from that whereas, for the discussion of that amendment, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment is approved, okay, one more?
Unless someone else has one, I don't want it.
Okay.
Okay, so if we go to the, and this is kind of new information that we learned at some meetings today, so I just want to make sure that there's, I think, already some confusion out there through this process, it's been going on now for almost two years, and I just want to make sure that things are clear, so if we go to the whereas that speaks to the Kitsap Public Facilities District is evaluating the proposed funding of a large portion of the CE dependent.
Which page, where is that?
Page two of three, the second whereas.
Okay.
Okay.
So it says, whereas the Kitsap Public Facilities District is evaluating the proposed funding of a large portion of the CEC dependent upon the public partners raising the remaining funding by pursuing, I don't necessarily know right now that it is dependent upon.
Correct.
Are we offering that up, I think there could be, that this group is actually looking for a commitment, right, to be able to go and then to better understand, you know, and up to, and so I don't want to paint any, maybe back this group into a corner as there's some of the things that are trying to be vetted, I think they're looking for a commitment.
Well, I believe what this resolution is, who, the audience, this is for the Public Facilities District, to ensure them that we are indeed a partner in this.
But if they're not asking for a contingent allocation of funding, we're implying that they are asking for a contingent amount of funding, so I think we could just remove the language that speaks to dependent upon, we're offering that language up, we don't know that that's what the applicant is requesting, my-
No, I understand what you're saying and I tend to agree with you, we're, the way this is worded, we're making assumptions.
We're putting too many stipulations on things.
Correct.
And so.
I agree.
I believe that's a condition of the funding, but that's only my belief, I don't know that for a fact.
Correct.
That's why I'd remove it.
The entire whereas?
No, no.
Just, they're evaluating, that's accurate, and so.
And then, and the public partners, you know, are sourcing, you know, opportunities to raise the remaining funding by pursuing local state, you know, that's something that we collectively, I think, are comfortable with, with going down and investigating and researching on how we can all play a role in the balance of these funding mechanisms.
So whereas I mean?
Wouldn't necessarily use the word dependent upon.
Okay.
Whereas they're evaluating proposed funding, and whereas these public partners are investigating mechanisms for the remaining funds.
That works.
Did you capture that, Brandon?
So that's two words.
Drafted the way it was.
Strike dependent and upon.
It'd be drafted.
It's actually breaking into two different wheres.
I would imagine.
Oh, I see, you're going to do that?
Okay.
You wouldn't need to.
You wouldn't need to.
You don't need to, I don't think.
You wouldn't need to repeat the word whereas.
I know, he was, he was just-
Yeah, so what I heard Councilmember Cuthbert say, and I, it must have been in a form of a motion, is to edit this in evaluating the proposed funding.
A large portion of the CEC, of the CEC, and that the public partners are-
Committed.
Are committed to raising the remaining funding by pursuing, yes.
You don't even have to put that in there, you can just do the-
Are committed, are-
I think we're committed, we're committed to pursuing.
No, I mean the that, you could just say and the public partners raising the remaining, you said and that.
So, Brandon, you want to read back what you, what you think you have?
A little bit different, but this is what I have, so whereas the Kitsap Public Facilities District is evaluating the purpose fund, the proposed funding of a large portion of the CEC investing mechanism of remaining funds, but-
No, 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 no.
No.
No. So, what I-
Take a step.
Okay.
So whereas the Kitsap Public Facilities District is evaluating the proposed funding of a large portion of the CEC and the public partners, you know, raising, I think you need the word committed, it's not a complete sentence.
Are committed.
Are committed to raising the remaining funding, pursuing local state, and continue on to that period, but I think you need the word committed, it's not a complete sentence.
I think it would be clearer since it's two different subjects to break it into two wheres.
Two wheres.
Okay.
After your and, and then whereas, as a separate, because you're talking about the public facilities commitment.
I like that.
And the commitment of the communities, yeah.
I like that.
Okay.
So what I heard is-
Period after CEC.
Yeah, period after CEC.
Yes.
And that whereas would be-
Well, semi-colon and, comma, just like you're changing from one whereas to the next.
Yep.
Okay, so read that one last time so it's clear.
Whereas the Kitsap Public Facilities District is evaluating the proposed funding of a large portion of the CEC, semicolon and, comma, then you would start a new bold capitalized whereas, comma, the public partners are committed to raise-
Committed raising.
With raising the remaining funding by pursuing local state federal grants.
Committed to raising.
Yep.
Okay, now, that was your motion?
Yes.
I second it.
And Councilmember Claussen?
If it hasn't been already.
Councilmember Claussen seconded this, okay, you got it on tape, that's the important part.
Would you say to raise rather than to raising?
To raise.
Raising.
I think two raise are committed with raising, one of the two.
Okay. Some idea.
Further discussion of this amendment, okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this amendment is approved, do you have one more?
I do, I'm sorry, just wanted clarification, I want to make sure this is right, the next whereas says whereas the Port of Bremerton, I'm sorry, yeah, the very next one, the Port of Bremerton has agreed to serve as the public partner, is that a true statement or have they committed to as a public partner?
At this point in the PD, public facilities process, this is an accurate statement, as we'll find out later in our discussion item, they may, they would prefer to back out of that.
So what if we change the word from V to A?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I question the rest of that, and it says is willing to facilitate the funding of the project.
Yes, period after public partner.
If you put an A in there, that leaves it to where it's more than just the Port of Bremerton facilitating the funding, it could be an conglomerate of three of us.
And that's, that's what, yeah.
Because the next whereas is very factual, that all of these are looking as-
So your latest amendment is, Port of Bremerton has agreed to serve as a public partner for the, for this, for this purpose, or just leave it as period, as a public partner, period, and strike the rest of it?
Yep.
Well, can I understand a little-
Well, you want to facilitate the funding, don't you?
Yeah, well, the, who, the group or whoever is the public partner needs to facilitate the funding.
Right.
So, okay, so we're-
So if you say A, it's one of multiple public partners.
So we did not strike.
It's flexibility.
Yes.
And, Scott, I'm sorry to jump in.
I was, yeah.
I was going to say, the Port of Bremerton has agreed to serve as a public partner for this purpose and is willing, oh god, I just had the words, and I think rather than saying is willing to facilitate, will participate in the facilitation of funding.
Okay, it sounds like you made the motion tonight, so, that sounded like a fabulous motion, so the Port of Bremerton has agreed to serve as a public partner.
Partner for this purpose and is willing to participate in the facilitation of funding for the project.
Okay, so that was the motion, and Jay Rosa, Councilmember Rosa Pepe has seconded that motion, that amendment.
Scott, did that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Did that satisfy you?
I just was curious what, what direct conversations we've had where they've indicated they would facilitate the funding of local state, federal grant sources.
To, to this point, I had a meeting with Commissioner Grito and Commissioner Stokes, and then previous to that, that has been, they have been at the meetings at the Public Facilities District and as an applicant, as the public partner, to this point, since then I've had a meeting and that they're, I'm not as comfortable with that, I think we're going to need to play a larger role in this, and that's part of a bigger conversation we're going to have in our discussion item tonight.
Point of clarification, Scott, when we're really referring to this public partner, it's really right now specific to the KFP, the Public Facilities District process, so to separate it from other grants or federal stuff right now, that those funds from the KPFD would have to go through a public agency, and so, right now, I think we're trying to figure out who that may be, and I think the port may be wanting maybe not to be the lead agency, but those conversations are ongoing as well, we're just trying to leave this maybe open for-
Sure.
For future clarification.
We're all supportive of the project, it's yet to be determined what the, whether it's a partnership or, and as I'll describe later this evening, I don't know that owner, the ownership is the, is as big a deal as the on-growing maintenance and operation, and we're trying, this, what we're trying to get from the Public Facilities District is dollars to build it, and pursue, and a partnership to pursue grants and other dollars to build the facility, which is one of the first steps, and then, from there, there's other, there's other things to be worked out too. Lots of details yet to be worked out. Okay, so we have an amendment on the table by Councilmember Ashby, seconded by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, other questions of that amendment? All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that amendment is approved, other question, Councilmember Cuthbert, he's got another.
Sorry, last one, I promise.
Okay, no, it doesn't have to be.
Staying consistent with the discussions we've had here over the last 30 minutes, if we look at, after that, we have five statements that we are making on behalf of the city.
Okay, which, which number?
We may consider removing number four as a whole, there's, there's a lot of details that need to be worked out, and again, we're putting in a contingency here that's yet to be known, and I think at this stage, what we're saying as the city is, we want to be a public partner, we want to engage, we want to figure this out, and it may not be as black and white as, as the timing that this may represent, and so, let's, let's leave that more open-ended.
Okay, so maybe we modify it somehow, so funding committed by the public-
Just delete it.
Okay, all right.
Once again, you're making an assumption and something that we may not really know.
Right, we're just here to support this in any way we can right now, and we know that there's a lot of work to be done, a lot of research that needs to be done, obviously the next stage is probably to receive, you know, some seed funding to move forward with engineering and architecture and programming and development costs, and so, let's just, yeah.
So there's a motion to remove number four of that, that's on page 14 of our packet.
And then number five would become before.
And remember, number five.
Number five comes before, that's true.
Yep.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Councilmember Lucarelli seconds that motion, further discussion of that amendment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that amendment is approved, other questions, comments?
I would move to-
It's already been moved, you just amended it.
You just, it was already, yeah, we already had a motion, I'm not sure, I can't remember.
It's too long ago.
I can't remember who it was, who made that motion in the second.
You've amended the original motion four times.
Oh, the main motion, okay, so we have a main, main motion made by Councilmember Claussen, seconded by Councilmember Lucarelli, so further discussion or questions about Councilmember Dean?
Just one last, have we, in light of this new information, our new approach perhaps, taken a look at Port of Bremerton's, Port of Bremerton's resolution to see if that needs some-
That would be for them, that was their draft, and they could, they could be doing the exact same, at the same time we are, wordsmithing their draft, their draft or their actual resolution too, so.
You're correct, they may, they may look different.
They may look different, it was just a draft.
We're just hoping there's no sort of fatal flaws in a relook at their draft that would be going forward, and is it worth pointing that out to them?
I have not heard that they are not supportive of the project at all, it's just to, whether or not they're the, the owner or lead agency.
And I think that's why I like the idea of a public partner versus the, I mean, the Port of Bremerton will have to play a role in this project, they're the landowner of some of this, right, and so they will play a role, one way or another.
The whereas that we kind of cleaned up with the funding scheme, they've got exactly word for word in there, and so perhaps it's worth-
We can't control what they do, they're, they're in a meeting just like we are tonight.
This evening's?
Yes, and this very, very issues on their agenda this evening.
Okay, I thought we had time to talk to them.
Yeah, no.
All right.
And I don't think it hurts anything to have that in there, but it is better not to have it in there.
I would agree.
And Kitsap County gets a presentation on the community center project in the next week or so, and then, I've heard that they're working through a process to provide a resolution of support also, so, all right, with that, any other comments or questions?
I just, I just have a question or a comment, whatever, we're-
You can make a statement, too.
I can make a statement, we're going to pass this resolution that we're supportive of the, the community center downtown, now, at what point are we going to, or will it be at the next meeting or a work study, to more define what that support will look like? And how we're going to do that moving forward, because it's really nice for us to say, yeah, we support it, but how actually are we going to do that?
Wouldn't that be kind of an evolving process, I don't know that we'll have a complete definitive answer by X, we may have the next piece of it and we would say, okay, we're supportive still, and then another piece, whatever that means, but I think there's a lot of components that are going to be coming forward, not necessarily all at once, but as they develop, we use the cost of, of maintenance and operation, for example, until we know exactly what kind of facility, who's going to be doing what, we won't know that component of it, so.
But will we have some idea of how we will verbalize our support or make our support known?
In the discussion later this evening, I'm, I'm going to ask for the council's permission for me to, so, I'll share with you, might as well share with you now, some of it, now, I had a meeting-
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to act on this particular-
There is, it's, it's a very good question, and we need to refine that and, and get answers to that before, at this point, we're not being asked to put any of our dollars into this, that could change, and in particular, as it relates to maintenance and operation, these types of facilities don't make money typically.
In addition to dollars, we're going to be putting our good name behind it, and so, you know, how are we going to do that, and if we're going to discuss that later, I'm fine with it, I just have-
I plan to, I plan to, and I ask, I plan to ask for your permission to, I guess, because I, I plan to attend that next Public Facilities District meeting, and I need some direction from you guys, what you're comfortable with me saying.
Perfect, perfect.
I'm not going to go write checks, I can't cash.
Okay, thank you.
I think by passing this resolution, we're telling you what the city's position is, so you can share everything in here, we've committed, if we approve this, we're, we're documenting our commitment to this point.
And I think there's issues of ownership and ongoing maintenance and operations that have to be resolved yet, and we could be the lead agency on this, it could be a partnership, and it could be a-
Yet to be determined for more-
Yeah, or it could be another governmental agency, but I believe at this point, it behooves us to be the leader in this, it's in our downtown, we benefit the most by this thing happening from an economic standpoint.
Yeah, I think realistically speaking, before anyone has to step up to determine ownership and ongoing maintenance and operations, it would be logical to me that there would be some sort of funding mechanism to go out and perform these studies and the market analysis and the designs and the expenses, so we can analyze it and really look what ownership and operations looks like, and so, I don't think that this is at all committing anybody to own or operate anything, it's there that we're supportive of this, you know, we think it's wise to take the next step and take a deeper dive so we know exactly what we're dealing with, and then we can make those determinations of, and analyze it at that level.
The way I'm approaching it, for what we know today, I'm supportive.
Agreed.
Something could come up tomorrow that could change it, but for right now, everything I know, I think it's a great project.
Likely the ask of the PFD is going to be incremental steps. Likely the ask of the PFD is going to be incremental steps, and they're going to fund a study and some design dollars, so that we can get answers, so that we can determine the programming and what this building looks like, and what it's going to cost to build it, and to maintain it, and to operate it. Because then we in turn know who the partners are, and the, and the percentage of usage of the building. Did that answer your, the two, your question? I think it was your question. Sort of. Sort of, more to come.
Yeah, more to come. I'll listen to the more to come, but I am supportive and willing to vote in favor of this.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Rosa Pippi.
I would agree with the council that this would be very short-sighted not to support this, because right now, looking at what's in the paper, Paul's was being very active in publicity of what their project is. And I'm afraid if we don't get behind it.
And get more public.
Get more public, we're going to fall off the radar screen. So you're, I agree. What we know now, this is very viable and very good for the community.
Thank you for your comment. All right. With that, we'll be voting on the main motion, which is a motion of support confirming our participation as a public partner with the Port of Bremerton and Kitsap County for a proposed community event center in downtown Port Orchard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. We are on to the second item this evening, adoption of a resolution sponsoring Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council's membership in the Association of Washington City's Risk Management Service Agency. Clerk Reinderson.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So discussion was held at the April ninth, two thousand and nineteen council meeting regarding a request from KRCC to sponsor them in a membership of the Association of Washington City's Risk Management Services Agency. It was noted that a jurisdiction who is currently with AWC, RMSA, can sponsor another jurisdiction by adoption of a resolution, so therefore, staff recommends adoption of the resolution as presented.
Okay. Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I move to adopt a resolution sponsoring the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council's membership into the Association of Washington City's Risk Management Service Agency.
Second.
Councilmember Deener seconded. And so, I think what's transpired here is that KRCC went out looking for new proposals for their risk management, for their insurance, and found AWC to be the most cost-effective provider of that service. That's who the city of Port Orchard uses, and we're very happy with the services that we have with them. And as a member, we're eligible to not, I guess, sponsor them as, as, as a member.
What does that mean to sponsor? What, what is implied by sponsoring, or what is our commitment there? Is it just in name only?
I believe so. They, KRCC still has to fill out some applications and have, the Risk Management Service Agency will still do underwriting to make sure that, you know, they're going to insure. And then, the timeline is, I believe, the AWC board meets in September and approves applications.
They will take it to the operating committee, which we meet in May, which I serve on that board. So we will probably, most likely, see the application come forward at that time and provide a recommendation to the board, which I believe the mayor sits on. So it'll go through a whole process. Like, like Councilmember Ashby says, they'll, they'll vet them, make sure that they're not coming in with a bunch of debt, if you will, or claims, make sure they're good, and then make sense overall.
And we're the only city on KRCC that uses this particular insurance pool. So we were the only ones that could be the sponsor.
There is no.
There's no risk.
Liability risk to us. We're, we're the only member that would be eligible to, to nominate them. So other questions or comments? Okay. Be voting on the adoption of a resolution sponsoring Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council's membership into the Washington Associate, the Association of Washington City's Risk Management Service Agency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. We are to our third item. Mr. Dorsey, you're up. Approval of change orders nineteen through twenty-three to contract number zero-three-seven-dash-seventeen, active construction for the Tremont Widening Project. And by the way, that sign looks fabulous.
It does look good, doesn't it? Yeah, it's good.
With that, you're up.
Which is, is it in the roundabout?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't, I.
No. Well, is there one in the roundabout, or one on the way?
Yes. And then there's one that says waterfront.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the directional sign.
Findings on both of them, the directional and the, the trailblazing, and then the intramontreal, so that looks pretty cool.
Really nice.
About a ten-foot compass rose on a piece of concrete.
Hold on. I'm going to drive up there.
You should drive up there.
And then the Harrison, Harrison signs back up, so they're putting in top soil. It's starting to look pretty good. Okay, so on March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, the Port Orchard City Council authorized change orders fourteen through eighteen for contract CO-three-seven-seventeen with active construction incorporated, thereby bringing the current value of all change orders to date to a total of one point four-eight-three-eight-thirty-one-zero-six, or a hundred and forty-eight point four percent of the contingency value. Tonight's action is for approval of change orders nineteen, which is the removal of the unsuitable materials in subgrade repair at a hundred and two thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Change order twenty, rerouting of the existing Canyon Court Sanitary Sewer Force Main at thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Change order twenty-one, which is a time extension that was associated with change order twelve, associated cost. So that had to do with, we extended time with their trailer, their copy machines, their phone service. So this is a, this ten thousand, seven sixty-six, seventy-five is basically those ancillary costs to extend. Change order twenty-two, cost value reconciling deduction, so that's a hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and ten fifty-five that comes back to us on confirmed non-use units quantities. And then seventeen, which was, this was the big issue that we have been discussing for twelve months, which is the trench backfill reconciliation, the plans, the specs, measurement, and payment. That was the big, big ticket. So even though there was a savings of like five hundred thousand in that, but there was an over, so the net was an increase of two hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents. So the approval of these change orders brings the current value of all change orders to date to one point six seven five, or a hundred and sixty-seven point six of the contingency value. And just as an update to the city trying to find some additional funding, at last week's Public Works Board presentation that I moderated, I had a good twenty minutes with TIB's executive director, Ashley Probert. And he's, at this point, he's completely understanding. I did send to him today the cost of complete, which is one point nine, one-two million, because he wanted to see that. And so.
That one point two point nine is the, over the contingency.
Yeah, the delta over the contingency is, or no, one point nine is the total, including the contingency. Yeah, so it's two million, one million we have. What I learned last week is he has, as the executive director, he actually has seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of authority as a director that doesn't even have to go to the board. So I, I just feel very hopeful that we'll get something from the TIB. I don't, whether it's a hundred thousand, or three hundred thousand, or seven fifty, anything's going to help. And so I feel fairly supportive, or confident, that I think we will get something out of TIB. I've also been asked today by TIB, during TIB's May seventeenth board meeting in Squim, they want me to give a fifteen-minute presentation on the Tremont project, kind of a, an overview. So I'll be meeting with them tomorrow at the Public Works Association Conference in Tacoma, and kind of get the specific details of what they want that to look like. And I'll put a PowerPoint presentation and present that to the board on, in May. So we're doing everything we can do to close this delta.
And accurate to say, the biggest changes there were changes in conditions, and due to unsuitable soils, that net resulting in us having to truck that out and truck in new material that was suitable for backfilling into the ditch. Excuse me.
Tremont?
Yeah, we're talking about the Tremont project.
The Tremont quarter, the new Tremonts?
Okay.
Councilmember Rosa Pippi?
I move to approve change orders number nineteen through twenty-three with active construction incorporated in amount not to exceed a hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lucarelli. Discussion of the change orders for us this evening? Voting on the approvals of change orders nineteen through twenty-three with active construction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the change orders are approved. We are to our two discussion items for this evening. The first is inter-local agreement with Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization. Councilmember Ashby is, sits on that board for us, and is going to lead that discussion.
Yes. The Peninsula Regional Transportation Planning Organization has had, as I believe I explained last time, Washington State Department of Transportation as their administrative arm, as their, what's called the Lead Planning Agency. And they gave us notice last April that they chose not to do that. So we've been going through a selection process, and last Friday, the, our PRTPO board passed a resolution and designated Kitsap Transit as our Lead Planning Agency. We also passed a resolution and designated Jefferson Transit as our physical agent. So we're moving forward. But because those are major changes to this group, another division of the DOT is requiring the group to be recertified. So this gave us an opportunity to update our, our inter-local agreement and our bylaws. The original inter-local agreement was made in nineteen ninety-one, and it, quite honestly, wasn't in sync anymore with the RCW. The RCW had changed over the years, and the inter-local agreement had not. I would point out in this, the big, big differences, primary things that we did is our organizational structure. We will have an executive board, which is the decision-making board. We will have what's called a transportation policy board, and this, the executive board, the decision-making board, will only be available, or you would, you will have to have executed the inter-local agreement to be eligible to be on the executive board. The executive board is open to membership by the four counties, Clougham, Jefferson, Kitsap, and Mason, and the nine cities that reside in them. Also, the port districts that reside, and the transit districts that reside. So those are the groups that are eligible to be on the executive board. The transit board, the transportation policy board, however, will be open to other public agencies and other interested groups and major employers. We will be holding those meetings, meetings concurrently, so we're going to have to be very mindful of how voting is done, because voting can only happen by the executive board. Then there's also a technical advisory committee, a TAC committee. So that's the organizational structure, and that is different from the original ILA. And this ILA points out, the Lead Planning Agency points out, the physical agent indicates that we are a separate legal entity, and then it has just, I don't want to say boilerplate stuff, because we did go through all of this in, in great detail. But those are the highlights for you. I have, you have all been provided a cover letter that does a better job of explaining than I did, and the actual ILA. And I'm hoping then that we can put this on our agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions this evening, and then we would put it on our agenda for our next meeting in May for acceptance. Okay. So are, is there any discussions or questions about either the Peninsula RPTO and the work we do, or the inter-local agreement itself?
Sorry?
John?
I have a question of the attorney, and whether or not I should be recusing myself from the discussion and the vote from here, since Kitsap Transit, although it's kind of the driving factor behind the change to the inter-local, it's really being driven by the DOT wanting this document to be recertified.
I don't believe it's necessary. I think it's appropriate for you to mention that and see if anybody else feels differently, has any objection to your voting on this, but.
So when we do have this on the agenda for action, then I will repeat that same, so.
I would also point out to our, our council that Port Orchard does not receive funding benefits through the Peninsula RPTO. That may change, we get all of our funding through PSRC. The Kitsap Transit and Kitsap County are eligible for some selected funds that run through the RPTO. But what we do get from the RPTO is a lot of collaboration and networking. And over the course of the three or four years that I have sat on this particular committee, the mayor and I, as an example, had a meeting with DOT earlier this year when we were lobbying for some money. And when we entered the meeting, I knew everyone there by first names, you know, we, we were friends. So that's the benefit that it has really given, given us, is access to people. And I know it's greatly beneficial to Transit, because they do a lot of coordination with the other transit agencies. But for the city of Port Orchard, the primary benefit is networking.
I would add that a potential future benefit would be that we've had some recent discussions regarding legislative asks.
Correct.
And we have been very successful, I think, in being a member of the West Sound Coalition. And the discussions that have been taking place recently is about possibly expanding that coalition to include Jefferson and Clougham. We already have Mason as part of the West Sound. But I think that it's kind of strength in numbers. We would have access to different legislators with potentially support from those communities, be it Clougham or Jefferson, or Port Townsend or Port Angeles, when we're promoting each of our different respective projects that we feel are important. So I think there's another potential benefit if we do in fact go that direction.
Other questions?
I have a quick question. I don't know if this is for our attorney, or Becky might be able to answer, but looking at section eleven and twelve, there's two things that kind of jump out. And under twelve, I was talking about dissolution, but the last sentence there says, "The debts, liabilities, and obligations of the PRTPO shall not constitute a debt liability or obligation of any member."
Correct.
Pretty clear. But if you go back to eleven, and it speaks to a withdrawing member, it says that their withdrawal does not absolve them of responsibility from financial and other obligations. So if there aren't any, how can there, I'm just thinking, what if we had to withdraw at some point? Could there be potential liabilities that we would be faced with?
That's a, that's a Sharon question.
I don't currently have a copy of the inter-local agreement in front of me. I don't think it was part of the packet.
It's a fair question, though.
They just seem to be in conflict with one another, whereas twelve is saying there isn't any liabilities of any member. But up above, if you withdraw, it says you could have obligations.
I think the one is, is if you have, if you withdraw, this is just off the top of my head, if you withdraw and you have made commitments, but if the entire RPTO dissolves, I think that's a separate issue.
I don't know. That's what, I don't know.
I'm trying to think, right.
What's their, what an example. What their, what an example may be.
Right.
Because the, the PRTPO was funded from the state. And that's pretty much the budget. But if, for example, the budget was developed that exceeded the amount from the state, we would all be obligated to contributing towards that excess amount. And I, I think it's a stretch, but that's the only thing I could think of that might have.
No, and I can see that, and that's where under the dissolution, I'm just wondering which, which is prevailing here, which language prevails.
Beck mentioned between completely dissolving the organization versus one entity pulling out of the organization.
But that's, I'm, I'm reading this different. It says, "Any member shall have the right to withdraw from the RPTO and this agreement by giving six months' written notice to the executive board. The remaining members agree that such withdrawal will not absolve them of the responsibilities." So if, if.
Good point.
The, the remaining members still have to meet all of the obligations. And if it totally dissolves, then the individual members are not liable.
Yeah, I read it the same way. I'm just curious on why one is saying there are no obligations of a member and then up above it says there could be obligations of a member, that's all. It just seems to be in conflict with one another. You know, to me, the bigger thing is if we want to dissolve this whole thing and there's liabilities, this is almost saying it's bankruptcy for this particular organization and it's not going to be joint and several to the other agencies.
Right.
But why does it imply in eleven that there could be joint and several obligations?
Well, I, I, I think what Councilmember Ashby was talking about, the distinction between those two, the, the PRTPO would still exist and so it would have to fulfill the obligations that all of the vote, that all the members voted on, even though one of those members has withdrawn. So that, that's just assuring that there, the commitments that were made will be kept. Whereas if, yeah, if the whole PRTPO as a whole dissolved, that would create different obligation, or would take away all of the obligations that, that they had entered into. So it's, it's just a different scenario.
There's a minimum participation that is required.
There is, in order for, in order for recertification, all four counties have to sign the ILA. Sixty percent of the cities, representing seventy-five percent of the population within those cities. So we anticipate that all five of the cities, there are three in Clougham, one in Mason, and one in Jefferson, and then two of the Kitsap cities need to sign. And right now, the two active are Bremerton and Port Orchard. Bainbridge Island and Paulsville have been invited to join if they would like. What's interesting information that I found out is the city of Bremerton has a larger population than, than Jefferson County. So it's really important that the city of Bremerton join, that they sign the ILA. And prior to the RPTO passing, moving this ILA forward, Bremerton City Attorney had reviewed it. And also, the ILA was put together by our attorney, which is Lisa Nichols, who's a Kitsap County prosecuting attorney, so her office.
I guess my question, and I don't know, is if one of those minimum withdrew, does that force a dissolution of the PRTPO?
I don't know. I don't know. I know to be certified, we have to have them.
Second certification or recertification.
Recertification, probably, again.
We don't, we don't take, we don't take comment from the public. Any other questions, Councilmember Ashby?
These are all good questions. I think we got an answer from the attorney, but if there's any others, we need to find out by the time we make that.
Do you have a copy of it now so you can?
I do.
You can revert prior to our vote. I know that at the RPTO level, if any jurisdiction wants changes to this, we would have to revote again in May and bring it all back to the councils in June. And we have to be recertified before July first.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, this is informational at this point. Okay, so we're going to jump to our last discussion item, which is, I went and toured the Village Green Community Center, which is very, there's a lot of similarities between this community center and the one that's being proposed on our waterfront. I just wanted to share the pictures and some of the data that I gathered from that visit. So maybe, thank you, Michelle, for giving the lights and we'll, it's just a handful of pictures. I just want to share some of the, and I didn't, sorry Fred, I didn't get any help from Noah on colors on my PowerPoint. He provided, they're busy with the software conversion, so he could not provide me with any technical support, so. And I hadn't seen these on the screen, sorry, they're not a little bigger. So that is the street view of the Kingston Community Center called Village Green Community Center. And it's really, hold on, Brandy, don't be jumping ahead on me yet. It's really their ga, central gathering place in their community. It was constructed three years ago for nine point two million dollars. It's twenty-three thousand square feet, houses the Boys, Boys and Girls Club, the Kitsap Regional Library, and an events and meeting space with a commercial kitchen. The event center will hold up to two hundred people. And they raised this, some grant, raised all the money with grants and community fundraising. And their, their major fundraiser is Pie in the Park, where the community, you bake two pies, you bring one. One is shared with the community and the other is auctioned off, auctioned off. And their largest event, raising this annual event for this, raised fifty thousand dollars on, in, in bake sale, John. You know, you've been, been big on the city doing bake sales, so.
You guys laugh when I bring it up.
Yeah, it, it works. So go ahead with the next slide now. This is the lobby, the place is gorgeous. And you come in off of the side street there into, it's kind of L-shaped and you go straight through those doors down to the event center. And I'm standing in front of the, the doors of the library right now. So go ahead, Brandy. And there's a senior, they don't, nobody wants to call it a senior center. It isn't a senior center. There's space and activities for the seniors of the community. And they've got some, a room dedicated to that. Go ahead, Brandy. And the conference space. I felt that the, in the right picture, there's a stage. It isn't very well done. It's only about a foot tall. This is part, you can partition, right now it's currently partitioned into two spaces. It could be partitioned into three spaces or one large space that would accommodate up to two hundred people. Go ahead. There's a patio that overlooks the gardens and I could, you know, we could have something similar that overlooks the water in the mountains, but this looks down on the, there's apple trees and, and an orchard and a playground facility. And this is the patio, as I said, off the, off the conference space. This is the commercial kitchen. And it's, there's no staff to it. It's, the staff that's there, all the utensils, the cooking equipment, they've got a checklist, you pay a deposit, you check everything off that it's there. When you're done with your event, you check it off, all, all off that it's been returned. Go ahead, Brandy. Boys and Girls Club is one-third of this space. They've got a very active Boys and Girls Club that pays for a third of the maintenance and operations also of the space. Boys and Girls Club have a gymnasium there, it's a half, that's a half court. It's not a full gymnasium for their activities. Go ahead, Brandy. There's a teen room in, in the facility. A computer lab. They said this particular space, because of the public computers that are available in the library, isn't well utilized. That there's just, there isn't really much of a need for it. They tend to use it for other meeting, for meeting space and not necessarily for its intended purpose. Go ahead. And this is the Kitsap Regional Library space. And go ahead, there, off, the building's kind of L-shaped. And then in this center of the, of it is, there's accesses to this, this garden that you could leave from the library out into this space. The library has a very nice kind of conference room within the library. And it might be it. Yeah, that is, that is it. And so, turn the lights back on if you'd like. And the, the facility has an annual operating budget of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They generate only fifty thousand dollars in, in revenue. And they acknowledge that they rent, they, they really give, their, their community built this with their money. And they don't feel that they should generate, you know, shouldn't be charging much for the use of the space. So they feel that, that, that they could do significantly better than that and they choose not to. The remaining expenses are covered, they enacted a parks district in, in the Kingston area. So two-thirds of this operating loss of two hundred thousand dollars a year is paid for by this parks district that they formed and one-third by the Boys and Girls Club. KRL's Kitsap Regional Library's contribution to this, they paid for their own tenant, fundraised their own tenant improvements in the building. And they pay for the, their contribution, they pay for the janitorial service on the entire twenty-three thousand square foot building. One of the things, they, they have a, a dedicated restroom that is a shower facility that, that people can use there. They have a number of homeless people that come in and use that. There are nonprofits in the community that actually, they have vouchers that they purchase and provide to homeless people that then can use the, the shower facility restroom. They have toiletries and, and things that have been donated. This correlation, you know, to our community, to Kingston. The, Kingston is a community of five thousand people. I, I think if, if our community truly wants this, I think it's, it's doable, that, that we could, you know, raise the additional, and in particular, if we can get a jumpstart with a contribution from the Public Facilities District. I mean, our community's fourteen thousand and we have an urban growth area with additional seventeen thousand. So thirty-one thousand people to draw from where they did it with a community of five thousand people. The Kitsap, the Kingston Library generates five thou, five thousand people a month travel through their library. We currently have fifteen thousand people a month that come through the Port Orchard branch of the, the library. So that's my, what I have to share, I, I, I think we have, we have, need to have a little more discussion too about our center, but do you have any questions about the Kingston one before I start talking about some of the other meetings? It's been a busy couple of weeks about this topic. So, so after, I think it was the next day after I went and toured this facility. And since then, members of the Public Facilities Board have toured the Kingston Village Greens Community Center too. So gotten a bit of a taste of what, I, I think it's very similar in size. The function, some of the function could be a little different, though. Mr. Clausen?
Well, I can just share, Transit has used this facility a lot. And it is very well utilized, it's very well accepted in the community. The, there's oftentimes where all of their meeting spaces are occupied by one thing or another. So it, it is very well used.
And they, they shared that with me. There's, it is a very active building.
It is.
They're, they're, I don't know how they're doing it, but partly it's a partnership with the library. I think there's some overlap, but they're, they're staffing this with one employee and, and a, a number of volunteers that, that help, senior volunteers, you know, they've got a senior center and so very active that way. Councilmember Lucarelli?
How many, how many parking places do they have? Is it pretty sizable?
Not a lot.
No.
It's not, it can actually be really tight if there's multiple popular events going on at the same time.
I would guess.
Fifty, sixty?
Oh, I think it's probably less than a hundred. I would say seventy-five, max.
That sounds right.
It didn't seem like, the parking lot didn't seem big.
No, it, it's.
It was, I can attest that parking was a real fight with, with that project.
That's kind of a challenge, huh?
So, and, and so sharing the, you have a question about?
We've heard that they also use it for their severe weather shelter.
They do. That is their severe weather, weather shelter and, and, yeah, you're correct. And so the next day, I had a meeting with Commissioner Guido and Port Commissioner Stokes and about those, the resolution we passed earlier and talking about the commitment of the three governmental entities in support of this project. And we're all enthusiastically in support of it. There's, there's no doubt about that. The, what I did learn, and, and so right now, the, the port is saying they're the, the public partner. And really what I got out of that meeting is, I'm not sure that they fully understand what that means. And it is a, it's a very important role that you're taking public, somebody's the fiscal agent of this. And you're taking tax dollars from the Public Facilities District and it's a very important role. I don't know that ownership is, is, it's a big deal, but it's not nearly as big a deal as hammering out, determining what the, the programming of this facility is through a study. And determining who's going to pay the operational and maintenance costs. That, that is the big issue and where a strong interlocal agreement is going to be of paramount importance. And then I, and I shared that with, Commissioner Stokes seems to think that facilities like this, you know, if you make a ten million dollar investment, you should get a return on that investment. And I haven't found an example of one, this is a, a, it would be a fabulous facility for our community, but I haven't seen, found an example of one that makes money. You know, you're going to have a new library, you're going to have meeting space and they're, you know, I, I think it's twenty-three to twenty-five thousand square feet is, they're twenty-three, you know, our library needs about ten thousand. I think about ten or twelve for a conference space and there's, you know, three to five thousand, I'm not sure what that is yet. And we won't know until we engage our community in, in that process. Commissioner Stokes said to me, said to me and Commissioner Guido agreed with him that Port Orchard should be the owner of this. And I said, well, that's the first I've heard that. And I'm not a policymaker, you two are, and I would need to bring that back to our city council. So that's what I'm doing here this evening is communicating that, I don't know if it's a request yet, but that I, I think it's likely and, and that we could own this. They, they, it's in our downtown. That was kind of, and I, my argument back to Commissioner Stokes was, but you owned the property and that's why, that's why currently they're the public partner in this. Because they own, you know, about half the property that's for this proposed facility. You know, that needs to be worked out and there's a lot of details that need to be worked out. Councilmember Clausen?
You know, it's interesting, and I'm not sure how to exactly quantify this, but you, you raised the point that you don't know of any of these that make money. But, and I know that's the operational and maintenance costs of it, but there's also the, the ongoing benefit to the community from, you know, we talked in our resolution about the increase in assessed valuation. That continues on into the future. The additional, in the case of our project, the additional business, if you will, for lack of a better term, that this project could generate with all kinds of different activities. And certainly, if you look at it from the whole master plan development, if that is in fact part of this, then you're looking at even more of a ongoing benefit that is, you know, jobs and things of that nature and what that will do to the merchants downtown to provide additional, so that, I mean, there's.
There's, there's revenue, it's not just direct revenue.
Yeah, exactly. There's revenue that the city and the community will benefit, not to mention having this asset in the community to take advantage of or whatever the activities would be. But there's ongoing benefit to the community that something like this will do, so.
I was just going to say, if you're ever in the area, this also reminds me, now that I've seen some of those photos, I've not visited here, but I've seen the, it's called Lake Wilderness Lodge. And it's a community center with the city of Maple Valley. And it's also an impressive facility, extremely busy, extremely activated. And they have other revenue sources that they are generating quite a bit of revenue as well to help. And they have other revenue sources that they are generating quite a bit of revenue as well to help support that operation. But that place is packed every time I've been there.
I think a good position for one of these, I mean, if your community is, if we're funding, I don't know what the funding source is completely at this, and I've got ideas, but if your community, if we fundraise this, and it's our community's asset, should we be making money on it? I think a noble goal would be to break even on it, you know.
No.
Right.
It's, you know, it's our community's asset, should we be charging them to use their asset? You know, that's some of my thought process, maybe it's flawed.
I can't tell you how many times I've had lunch in Kingston because I've had a meeting of some sort or participated in a meeting that was because of that conference center being available, or the community center, I guess.
So I guess my ask, the, we don't have another council meeting, or at least I won't be in attendance, my mayor's report, I'm going to miss the next council meeting, but there's a PFD meeting, I think on the twentieth. And I would like to go there in their public comment period and voice, you know, enthusiastically our support of this partnership and of our, in our role. And our role could possibly in time evolve and become larger than it is at the current time as this process, as we go through, you know, the process of determining what this center looks like and who the users are. And I just want to make sure you don't have any concern with that, because I don't want you to read it in the paper first. Councilmember Lucarelli?
Would there be any problem with our current setup handling this, finance for instance? Would we need more staff, or?
Probably, I mean, I think.
You need to think that, that it would.
We have to answer all those questions.
We talked about that very issue this afternoon at the Finance Committee meeting. And initially, I think what we're looking at is, step one is, this is probably going to become something that we're eligible to use maybe some park impact fees on, maybe. And we'd want to, we talked about doing a park, updating our park comprehensive plan next year. We'd probably want to do that sooner than later, while we're going to do it anyway. But we'd want to incorporate the uses of this facility into that master planning process. And then from there, it's hopefully getting some money from the Public Facilities District to do a study, you know, for, of this facility. There's some cost estimates for that already, and then also from that step then comes the design, you know, the design of it. So we can know what the costs are, the true costs are. So it might involve our planning staff in the first year, but you're right, in time, if we're the fiscal agent of this, you know, it could impact Mr. Crocker's department, but he's going to have a brand new accounting software system, and they're going to be able to do phenomenal things.
It could fold in the discussion of a Parks and Rec department.
You know, I mentioned that very thing, it could, it very well could.
I mean, there's any number of directions this thing could turn as we move forward, and that's part of, you know, this this evolution, if you will, of this project. Because we're going to have to get more information to know, I think Beck, you've covered it well at our Finance Committee, we're not even quite sure of the questions that we need to ask yet. But we will learn them as we move forward, but as we know today, I think personally, I'm very supportive of it.
We have a project, we've heard this word transformational numerous times, and it truly is. And we can't, we can't afford not to investigate what this could look like and to make it happen. So go to Councilor Dina first.
So I think it may have been six years or so ago that a previous administration and Charlotte were looking at community center ideas, and I think there was a survey that was sent out.
It was YMCA.
It was for YMCA.
I have it, I have it, it was completed in the beginning of my.
Was that with a Y specifically in mind?
Yes, yes, it was.
Yes.
Would, does that inform sort of a preview on what some of the hopes might be for this facility?
It primarily determined that there was a need, that if the YMCA was built, that there is demand and a need, and what the programming of a YMCA would look like, and I'll gladly share that, I have it. I'd gladly, would you all like to see it?
Well, only if it has value in.
No, not to this, I don't believe, it, what, the challenge we have is, is, so then I went to the YMCA and said, okay, well, we've got a need study, and it says our community wants this. And the model that they did in, I think it was Sumner, I know it was Gig Harbor and Silverdale, was that the community, you know, you determined what the programming it was, and the doll, what was needed, the dollar amount, and I can't, off the top of my head, I don't know what it was, they're expensive, you know, let's say it's, let's say it's fifty million, but I think it's more than that. That the community would raise half of it, and that the YMCA goes out and bonds the other half, or borrows the other half, and then the dues pay back the debt. And that was their, that's their model, they've done with numerous of these. I went to them and said, okay, well, you know, Chief Wright and I were willing to champion that fundraising cause, and they said, we're not doing, we're lent up, we're not willing to do that any longer, that model. If you want a YMCA, you've got to raise one hundred percent, and I said, then it's not a YMCA.
Right, so, and I wasn't talking so much about trying to get a Y done, or something like that done, or the structuring of that. But if I recall, the survey that went out said, what would you like to see in terms of space? And so there was.
There is a component of that, yeah.
Kitchen was called out for, and conference room certainly, and so I was wondering if those uses sort of.
I think, you know, it's been four years, almost four years, and we probably, we have to update our parks plan anyway in that process, so.
I was only curious if we recalled what some of the heavier uses were that people wanted to see in terms of.
Well, I think if we, if this goes down the path, we in fact do become a leading player of a public agency. That's the type of public outreach we need to have, because this is, you know, just the idea of surveying people with YMCA on their mind, versus YMCA versus this community center, I think you're asking different questions. I think that's the input, if our community's going to have a role with owning this, we're going to, they're going to be with us every step of the way.
And this process could unearth that we have multiple needs, and that may very well. Well, be up that avenue of Parks and Rec's levy and department that does not just this. It could be something more that our community wants too. We won't know till we ask the question, or questions. Councilmember Ashby?
I was just going to say, my earlier question in our other discussion is, what are the actions we, are we going to take now? We've passed the resolution, but what actions are we going to take? And I personally would be supportive if the city of Port Orchard, you use the word, mayor, it to be a champion and a leader. We need, one of these public partners is going to have to step forward and be a leader. And I have no problem with the city of Port Orchard doing that and championing this effort. I think that that would be a good role for us initially.
It's convincing the Public Facilities District to invest in us.
Correct.
To this point, and then that will generate additional action that we may need to take as a body.
And I would have no problem if the mayor, you know, kind of outlined steps to take to champion the effort, and if there were other things that the council could do to participate, you know, feel free to involve us also.
Councilmember Roosevelt?
No, I was just going to say that, you know, the flippant side of me says, gee, what are we going to do after three months done? I think we figured it out. But Jim Collins, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with Good to Great, you know, talks about the big hairy audacious goal, you know, the BHAG, and, you know, you've got to start with the idea. And the idea's here, and, you know, we need to, need to grasp it, and you're right, we need to know what the steps are. But if we're afraid of what the steps may be, we won't go anywhere. And this, you know, you keep looking at the plan, and keep looking at the plan, and how many people are involved, and how many people are just behind this right now, and it's like, yeah, we need to know what the facility district's going to do, what the steps are, but if we're not there, you know, what's the old saying, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. I think we need to be at the table.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
And another thing to keep in mind is the importance of the impact of the center on the development of our community, including Kitsap Bank, which I see as crucial in staying here in Port Orchard. So that puts a little bit of fire to it. I want Kitsap Bank to feel comfortable going ahead with their plans, to stay here.
These, this is the catalyst, this community center, because Wes Larson from Sound West, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn here, has told me that this project works for their, his company as a master plan project, and not the six forty base site by itself, isn't, isn't a viable project for his company. It could be for somebody, but not for his company. And for his company to move forward, they need, this master plan project has fifty thousand square feet of commercial space. You don't build fifty thousand squares feet of commercial space without a tenant for it. And, you know, the bank, if we, this community center happens, the bank is willing to commit to building their corporate campus here, which then is the leases that developer needs to make, you know, the larger project work. So it's a series of dominoes almost that need to happen. I think I've got, I liked, I wrote down, Councilmember, we will be, you know, the champion and leader of the project, and that's the message that I'll convey to the Public Facilities Board. With that, I think that.
Well, you said at the next PFD meeting that they needed to hear more, is that a, is that going to be a hearing? Is that a public?
No, I just feel, okay, what, the feedback I'm getting from the Public Facilities Board is that Port Orchard, they're concerned that because Port Orchard isn't active enough in this process, or engaged enough in this process. And I just want to ease, I guess, put them at ease with those concerns. And my meeting with the other two leaders, I didn't sense that we had a champion or a leader in the room, other than myself possibly.
Do you believe there's an opportunity that one of the other commissioners would step forward and be the lead for the port? There's one that's very experienced in doing these types of projects.
There's port commissioners or county commissioners, they get spun up about their districts. And so I can't speak for those, but that's my observation, is you don't get somebody else's sandbox.
This gives us the opportunity to really go have those conversations and figure it out.
Yeah.
We don't have all those answers yet, but this.
I believe that, yes, there's support from other, whether it be the port or the county, we're viewed in a positive light in this project.
Well, I think these resolutions, which has taken, the port has taken a position by the adoption of this, not a commissioner.
Yes.
Which I think will say a lot.
Very true. Ready to move on? All right, we're done with our discussion items, and we're to council committee reports. Finance Committee just met this evening?
Yes, we did, and I'm happy to report that the sales tax revenue is still coming in better than we anticipated, year over year, it's about five point three percent. This is with just the first quarter. And over the budget, it's about six point four percent, so we're on the plus side, which is a, which is a good thing. And our REIT revenue is, although it's slowed down, it's still coming in, so I think we're all right there. Noah provided us with a copy, a new report with his new fangled software. He's testing different formats for reports on us, and I think he struck on one that is simple enough that I can understand. It is essentially, if you get off of the fund name, it's three columns. Where we started, what we spent, and where we ended, which is pretty much what you need to know. So we're doing fine there, other than we will be making some changes as he shifts things around from one account and spreading it out in more accounts to give a little bit better accountability, I guess you would say. So from that standpoint, it was all very positive. The mayor shared with us a meeting that he attended, I think you're going to probably share that, small business.
I didn't bring it with me tonight, but.
He just shared that he attended a meeting with, it was kind of sponsored by Kitsap Bank, but it was really Western Washington University and their activity that they've done in other areas to support the development of small business enterprises where they'll work with potential develop business owners and help them develop business plans and whatever they need to get that going. And then we talked also very briefly with, pretty much, we talked more tonight here on the community center than we did at the committee meeting, but we did talk about some of those things like if, and this is a big if, because this could go whichever direction. It could impact us staffing, it could impact us with the formal Parks Department, those sorts of things, or whether we want to do a metropolitan Parks District that can have some taxid authority on their own and that sort of thing. So we just kind of brainstormed and hypothetical a lot on the community center, but that was the extent.
Thank you for your report, your report. Economic Development Tourism?
Yes, we will be meeting the second Monday of May, which I believe is the thirteenth. And mayor, I would hope that you would be able at that meeting to share that small business development piece, because we do have the chamber and POBSA in attendance at that meeting, and it would be nice.
I would gladly do that in June, what I was going to tell you in my mayor's report, I'm out of town that week.
Okay.
But yes.
It's just a piece of information I think might be good for them, and so if you could bring that.
Yes, I will. Way out to the June agenda. Utilities?
Yes, we met and covered a great deal of information, one being Stormwater Comprehensive Plan update, which I think we should make available to all the council members, it's great reading, and.
It's a draft, I believe.
It's a draft.
Eventually the full council will see it.
Right, and we talked again about billing sewer rates, whether we should go on a fixture count, base it on a fixture count or consumption. And the conversation basically goes back to if we switch gears, it's a very expensive kind of proposition, and for the time being, we probably can't afford that, but the discussion is ongoing. I think the major takeaway on this is that, though we talked about all the various sites, the well thirteen, the McCormick Pump Station, the biggest takeaway I had is that we really need to be moving forward with the Marina Pump Station. It needs to be ready to handle the flow coming from pump station number two, McCormick Woods, when that goes online and all of that. Marx can speak more knowledgeably about all of that, but we can't wait indefinitely to deal with the Marina Pump Station, which means we probably won't be able to wait for the community center to move forward.
We're moving forward with.
So here we go, a six million-ish dollar project. And if we do move forward with the community center and has to be moved, that would be an eleven million dollar expense of some sort. I hope I'm not in a speaking in any way, but.
Community center's in a completely different location, so we don't have any concerns with that.
Okay, all right. And that we're going to be taking a tour, our next meeting will be May thirteenth. And to bring everyone up to date on what's going on, we'll be touring the site for well number thirteen and the pump stations one and two, McCormick Woods, and seeing where all of these projects are, and getting a better idea of what we're actually doing right now.
And Sewer Advisory?
Is going to be meeting tomorrow at six thirty at this sewer plant.
Okay, do you want to do chimes and lights while you're?
Chimes and lights, right, basically we landed on our theme, which is Christmas by the Bay this year. And we've worked on the application for the tree plant, the planters, and Janine is updating all of that, and we'll have that online soon. I hope that the council will sponsor a tree again this year. We're going to put trees in all of the planters.
All right, land use didn't meet earlier this week, and the three of you could get together with your calendars after the meeting, or this evening, that'd be great. And the, the three of you could get together with your calendars, you know, after the meeting or this evening, that'd be great. And let us know when you would like to meet.
Well, so given the items that were on the agenda, is, is there a need to meet earlier than the next scheduled meeting?
It's up to you guys.
Okay.
I think the, the most pressing issue, the property tax abatement will be on the work study in May, so probably not. And we'll find other items for you to talk about.
Okay.
There was a couple of others that were, that were there. I don't know that they're pressing.
They didn't seem pressing, no?
Yeah.
I don't think so, did you?
And I think Councilmember Cuchardi has a desire to maybe change your guys' meeting time.
Yeah, we can talk about it, but.
But you guys can talk about that offline.
Would the next one be on the twentieth, since Memorial Day is the following Monday? Have you even looked at that?
I haven't looked at that. Twenty seventh is what it would normally be, but.
Right, but that's Memorial Day. Why don't we huddle after the meeting and we'll figure it out real quick?
Okay. Watching tax, have you guys met?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Got the community service day is this Saturday. Hopefully, the weather looks promising. And Public Works is busily stockpiling materials for everybody to, got it. We've got sixty yards of topsoil at McCormick Village Park. We've got chips to spread. We've got Scotch broom to pull. We've got a hundred yards of topsoil at Van Zee. We've got beauty bark at Cedar Heights Junior High, see beauty bark at high school. Got a little bit of a beach cleanup. The Port of Birmingham jumped in, and they're gonna have folks down there. Kitsap Bank is gonna have a hundred and fifty employees. They're doing a breakfast with their employees at, at eight thirty, I believe it is, eight or eight thirty. And then they're gonna jump out there. And we've, so we've got a little bit of beauty bark at Etta Turner Park. And then across the bridge to the point out there is gonna get beauty bark. And Port of Birmingham has the boat launch, and behind the grandstands, I'm beauty barking that. So I think that's probably plenty. So I'm, I'm planning on about three hundred people is what.
So just pick where we want to go.
Just pick where you want to go and bring whatever tools you need. You'll see me popping around, you know, more than anything. Thank people for coming out.
Just as informational, the Sinclair inlet annual cleanup had probably the most robust turnout of people, kids. A lot of kids showed up from schools. So I think the beach situation is probably pretty clean.
And it's not, and I've let Kitsap Bank know that.
Okay.
We're gonna do a little bit of rub, I mean, what we can get, and the tide isn't, it never seems to be the right tide.
Right. And so they were picking up rubbish, but I mean, past, from Annapolis past Cheers has been scoured, so. But rubble, nobody was picking that up.
Yeah, that's, our focus is gonna be the rubble. And Zach, our stormwater, Zach Holt, our stormwater coordinator, will be on site to help that. And he gave the, the volunteer organizations a little fact sheet, what we're trying to do. And it's, anything this big is, that's non-native, we're trying to get back up to the bulkhead where it belongs. So, all right. Others, I, I don't have any, my Super Tuesday is a couple of weeks out, so I don't have anything for outside agencies. We will, let's see, I guess mayor's report next, huh? Talked about the community service, spring cleanup's coming, twentieth through the twenty-fourth. So you can clean your garage out, your basement out, closet, whatever, where you've got, wherever you got that stuff.
May.
May twentieth through the twenty-fourth, and it varies, it's on your, it's on your garbage day, as always, that week. May fourteenth, council meeting, Mayor Protem, I'll be out of town that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I return that Wednesday evening. So.
You're talking to him.
Beck, you're the mayor of Protem.
I am.
Got confused, sorry.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm out of town that May fourteenth meeting. The, may, we will have a, sorry, we are going to have a work study in May. Got a couple of big issues on there. We want to talk about property tax abatement and whether we want to tweak that, make, strengthen the language relating to affordability on that twelve-year abatement. So Nick's and his staff are putting something together for that, for your discussion. And it doesn't appear that the House and the Senate both had bag bands. And they weren't that disim, disasim, this, that far apart. And I, it doesn't appear they're gonna come to a vote unless they surprise us. So we're gonna bring the bag band back to the May work study, because I think we're pretty close. We just put it on hold because we figured the legislatures, legislature was gonna take action and it would have preempted what we did. Chimes have been ordered, so. As far as the timeline, I will promise that they'll work for Christmas. Beyond that.
Which Christmas?
A Christmas.
So you're learning.
So that, yeah, it'll, there, you know, the, the speakers are, you know, we got, the speakers are a thousand dollars apiece that go up there and new wires and all new equipment, so. Now. No, yeah, I, nope, they are not my old speakers. I don't know if anybody noticed, we have a new high intensity flash and crosswalk at Harrison and Bay Street. DOT installed that. And I sent an email about, to all departments. There's a fabulous organization called the Kurt Wagner Education Fund, and they are, one of their events is they take, do a takeover at High Joey Bowling. And I've challenged the departments to maybe have a little bowling event. So maybe the city council wants to have a bowling team of, you know, four or five of you. I don't know. It's up to you. There might be a trophy, the mayor's cup or something, I don't know.
June nineteenth?
Gosh, those coasters are everywhere. What's the date? It's in June.
That sounds right.
It's, it's a Wednesday, yeah.
Third Wednesday.
Yep, June nineteenth. You're spot on. We've got two fabulous new restrooms, one in McCormick Village Park and one at Van Zee. And we don't have any hand dryers in them, I've been told. So we're investigating the viability and the cost to put hand dryers in there. Because paper towels are problematic, teenagers tend. Oh, is that what we've learned? Is, okay, I'll quit talking about this then. Well, true, but wads of paper towels are tough on toilets too. So.
And our fire starters.
Yeah, and their fire starters, all kinds of problems. So anyway. Yeah, their public gets right, their bathroom burned. So, anyway, they're, they're not inexpensive, though.
Air dry.
Yeah, that's what everybody's doing right now, is doing this, so, yeah. But I've gotten a complaint or two about that. So, anyway, boy, hiring is difficult. We've lost our mechanic to a transit agency. I'm not gonna mention names. We have hired, and so we're, we're hiring, trying to hire a new mechanic. We have hired our new Public Works TV operator. We have hired a new clerk for Public Works, and she's working out fabulously, Kara. And we have a new court clerk, Corey, I believe is her name. And we're still recruiting a, trying to recruit a heavy equipment operator. And Deb, Debbie Lund, Debbie Lund is our new HR coordinator that starts next week. And I'm still in denial that Deb Howard's retiring, so. And that's it for the mayor's report. So, Mr. Dorsey, what do you have?
A couple of quick things. So the paving is scheduled for Bay Street and Rockwall at the same time. I think it's May seventh or it's early May, first, definitely the first two weeks of May. So they've been coordinating with the Marley owner to actually pave her area to help some of our costs and just make that a better project overall. And we're currently coordinating, I don't know if I mentioned this last time, but we're currently coordinating the three-night closure of Tremont. That will be, you know, the whole off-ramp on night one. And then night two and night three, it'll just be Tremont east of the interchange. But on the first night, it'll be the interchange at sixteen. So we're making sure we get PMS boards all the way down Goris and all the way back between Mullenix and Sedgwick to give people options. But that'll be a very short-term inconvenience that will provide, you know, thirty years of much better paving because we won't have seams. We'll have a better, much better paving project. So that's it.
Okay, Mr. Crocker?
The only thing I have to add, just a quick software update. So currently down three staff members, two out on pregnancies and one out on illness. So we're down three staff members, but we're frantically working to convert over. This week, we're converting over our utility billing side, so we're expecting to be live by Friday. So we're working through all those right now. And that is the last major module that we need to convert over. And at that point, we're probably ninety to ninety-five percent there. The rest is training, kind of getting familiar with the product, testing any last second bugs, continue to work with the vendor. But we are getting really close, so it's pretty exciting.
I was a test victim today on credit card payment on a utility bill. And it works for hand keying, but the keypad wasn't communicating with the computer system. So better it not work on me than real customers.
You'll plug it in.
Yeah, maybe. There's something wrong because it didn't work. So, Sharon?
Nothing for me this evening.
Randy? Okay. We're to our second public comment period.
I had a couple of things. The first one was on when you were talking about the public partnership and you were removing and changing the language. If we don't have copies of it, we have no idea. And putting it up on the screen, nobody can read off that screen. So you should at least read it, especially number four. I have no idea what you deleted on number four. And you guys keep talking about transparency, but we, and the people on their computers looking at this, they're not gonna know anything that happened on that segment, other than you either removed or added words, but not what it really is about. The next thing I was wondering about is, I'm noticing that there's no study sessions anymore. And I don't ever remember hearing it talked about, that you weren't going to have them. And like, I didn't know that you were having this meeting tonight. I did get the notice about the council meeting, which I always get. But that's just part of being transparent, is us knowing about it, so.
I did announce it at the last, at the council meeting, that we weren't gonna have a work study.
Right, you did announce that. But what was this tonight, if that wasn't a temper, some form of, you used the word work study in it.
We were gonna, we were having a discussion, and the reason, it was scheduled for the end of the meeting, like when we, we've been doing the discussion items. And the reason we did, the merchants wanted to come and, come to the meeting and, and meet at the beginning versus the end.
Okay, but it's, it's just here another, there was no communication, and so some of us missed it, not knowing that it was happening. And another thing is, do we have a senior center in Port Orchard?
Givens, there's one at Givens, county operated.
Okay, just wondering, because I hadn't heard anything about it or anything. And then today on the news, they were talking about, and I thought it was the Supreme Court, but I guess I talked to the chief and he said it was the sixth district, that it is unlawful for chalk marks to be put on, and the woman won the case. That's unlawful search and seizure. So they were parked legally when the marks were put on their car. And so to come back and get a ticket with a chalk mark, it, she won the case. So just saying that that's something that may be coming down the line at other places because she'd gotten three tickets that way and took it all the way to the, he said, the sixth district and won the case. So just letting that be known. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Ron?
I'm just snooping.
Okay. That's why we're here.
Snooping or sleeping?
All right. So we don't have an executive session. We are going to adjourn our meeting. And we have a, a brief collective bargaining session. We're gonna go, so entering a separate meeting related to collective bargaining pursuant to RCW forty thirty point one four oh four B. And we will take no action after that.